Can't.
May you say a word. Yeah, we got. Yeah. You know. You need to rule.
Want to, anyway send it to you, but if you want to resend that. But we had to do a science video on video. My science partner and I had this theory that our teacher wasn't reading, but you read the first paragraph and the last paragraph. So he wrote something that made sense for first and last, then he wrote a recipe out of a coffee in the middle. And so then it got as gross as chemistry class and we did that. And he let us keep our A because it's like, hey. Be extended, we'll see if he is a nice old one.
It was the all which entirely.
Oh, really? Okay. Unfortunately, she's part of the province. Yeah.
You trying to get one? Just fine, just fine. They do. So wanted to be two large candles. No, my brother. No, a lot of stuff can be buried. And he has all that. They have a. Yes.
For me, President, I'm following the July meeting. Forward again, I want to explain the white thing on the table is called Zumaow, I've been told. It is a way of having hybrid meetings. It's making me nauseous up here because I get those three sixty pan of, well, I get everybody literally in one frame. And then this thing will jump to the end focus on speaker. And tonight it's experimental, although I believe them are still converted to. So that said. Our first order is a public hearing on expansion. Amstrue Valley with four forty seven bathroom. Now, fourteen, you fourteen, lot six, who will be speaking for. We would have this time your audience was the public appearance. Explain the project to them.
I have no idea. Has no idea. Could be loud enough for this room. Good evening, my name is James Low and we're an engineer with Buffalo. I have planes on their table Wednesday night with A true value. One of the table. Over what we are proposing through the site land. Process, the expansion of. Their existing paved area right over in here south towards the to the north. Expansion of a gravel area out in the rear portion of the site. Project will be essentially be out over the existing retention basin that is on site. Be replaced with a above ground stormwater undergrain basin. And some underground stormwater chambers to control the heat rates of runoff from the site. It's roughly about three point three acres of new pavement and gravel. All the pavement is towards the the front portion, gravel towards the back. There will be a. An amount of wetland impact that we are mitigating the total impacts, total amount of impacts with the use of a. Moderate sized retaining wall. The area will be used for outdoor storage items like picnic table, drain pipes. Equipment, rail trailers, things along those lines. And. No improvements to nor no plans to improve the building or anything of that sort at this time, so. If. That is, you think a good synopsis, I will turn it over to the public hearing portion.
Thank you. As you asked, if anybody in the audience was asked a question to be addressed, please identify yourself where you live. So with that said, is there anybody who has a comment or a question?
Yeah, I have.
Would you stand and identify yourself?
I'm going to fall into the changing room on the backside of. I'm curious about what sort of activity would be happening during what hours?
As far as I'm aware, anything will just be during regular business hours. Where they would be, you know, moving that correct on your. Yeah, construction schedule would follow the town requirements of for for timing of. Restrictions per hour outside of with, you know, and then the parameters of when the town allows construction. And then business-wise, I would expect it to be roughly the hour of operation and maybe doing some things before. And or after by a little bit, but I we're not proposing any any lighting or anything else back in this area. There's a couple of of lights extending the existing whole runs out right over in here. So there wouldn't be any other lighting to illuminate back in that area.
Then we might turn off or down.
There'll be, there'll be down shield.
Down shield is that on all night?
Similar to the sequence that's now, yeah. Will there be anything, any practices or thoughts preventing people from driving the cars back there? Nothing other than mall security. I mean, I don't know if there's an issue with people going back in behind the doors now, but I thought I would call here recently about the incident of a home machine.
Anyone? Yes, I have any questions, please. My name is Evenmore, Sarah and I live at thirty five and drive directly behind Ames Lot. Couple of quick questions to get started. Maybe on topic or off topic, but I see rain this year in summer, but there are two other owners of game supply. And I'm just wondering during the whole process here for the application, this expansion project and all that. It hasn't transaction been made or something been sold so that everything going forward with the under sonder or nothing has been determined yet? How does the owners feel about this process? At all?
Yes, well, I'm just saying the permit process and the whole process that went through this. That's what I'm saying, so that everything's under his name on a legal basis. Moving the ball, I'm just wondering how that bears where we are starting the process to move and that's. You know, it's like saying I bought the town, but it's not in my name yet because we're going to do all renovations and undermining and so. You know, someday.
Who the application is under age of. Okay, so who, you know, their corporate structure, you know, dictates who, you know, who makes what level of the city.
So that being said, being that our property, my property and the surrounding properties of our neighborhood. You know, right now, let's say that they are assessed that X value per property and being that it is a dead end quiet wooded neighborhood. If that X value was today and then after all these renovations now that the view is no longer wooded or private, it's now looking at a. Commercial setting and that degrades reduces the property value of myself and everybody else here. Is game supply going to cut the check for the difference property value because of your extension? All or none, so you know, that's where it's an impact on people's potential property values that is a real concern. Moving forward from a quiet residential neighborhood is now looking at parking lights, asking people potential traffic impact of the property value. The other is. For you're saying you will go, you know, what's green on your map is what's going to be cleared. When we did the walkthrough. In my opinion, it was open to interpretation of exactly what is fifty feet. Because there are some areas where it appeared to be a lot closer than that and some areas sure will might be as much of a little more.
Yeah, there are definitely, you know, certainly areas right in here where the the clearing to the property line is, is, I think we had noted about. Six feet in a pretty narrow spot, you know, transitioning out to, you know, roughly thirty feet here. To over fifty feet up here and then in excess of fifty to the the backside. Can you split that over the middle? I think half of the room changes here. Oh, sorry. The the light green is is areas that will be cleared and graded by, you know, replanted with grass. Down here is the stormwater basin, so that will be replanted. The dark green is more of an understated wooded area. So, you know, this the tree line here roughly would be the limit of clear.
No, no, no.
There's so many questions going on in my head. Oh, so all the hardwoods, new trees, all that people poppers gone, we're going to be looking at gravel in the winter time. So that's my first thought. My second thought is storage. What were the names? Outdoor storage, yes. So what is to prevent aims I can turn that into a lumpy at some point? I know Sonder has loves wood and I know it'd be great. And he's awfully good at that tractor thing it is. He can beep it around and like and that's my thing. Hours of operation of that system, you guys are awesome. So we hear that. When did you guys actually buy that around building a house where in five now anyways? Did you guys, did Ann already own that? So the residential neighborhood was there many years before then and playing for all that. So that's the new guy. And the annual little house. So they are all the way up to the painting station, the tower, I mean, I'm making all all that's the power line. Okay. So there's really good enough. Okay, thank you, I'm sorry.
I just have two more questions. We're around that perimeter. Is it pretty much set in stone and you determine that that's how far you're going to come to people's property lines? There's no compromise for, you know, alternative to reduce your overall footprint by.
Yeah, ultimately, right, right up in here, it's necessary for the the stormwater. Water quality provisions that the state required, you know. These guys aren't getting any benefit truly, you know, from a from a business standpoint. Out of making a base and any bigger than they they have to be. So ultimately, this was the this is essentially what is required to meet the state criteria.
Well, that brings me to my last point, which is for everything that this whole entire endeavor is costing between the engineering. You know, your studies, all this stuff, and then the cost of the project and whatnot. I mean, for the cost of it, I have a conversation with the gags across the street by the old box seat. And have two locations and expand like nobody's business out of residential area instead of impacting the neighbors.
Then you're then you're crossing route one.
Yeah, that's two separate locations for two separate issues for, you know, a lot more ARG and AGR.
Ultimately, this this provides, you know, what we feel is a, you know, a. Well buffered location with, you know, storage right here for materials right, you know, on the property without having to transport it over the public road.
Is there a way to get more like you did the other rings, Wayne, of that in full range, is it better than the heavy green? Is there any way to get that around?
Well, I mean, is it still going to get to the same? I would want to commit that it could be, you know, I'd love to see what you did with that. All that extra work on the inside.
Yeah, ultimately. Right, right out of here is is this dash line is the stormwater basin for the the requirements to meet the state stormwater regulate.
That's really all you say.
Yeah, and some, you know, some measure with this pond right there, yeah.
Any additional questions, Connor? For the record, Ames Lot Incorporated is the applicant, I'm very happy with standing with you, so. We can suggest other, you want to go around the street, there's nothing the town can do. Other whole wall up to them and not up to the town. Setbacks and buffering that are in our ordinance, likely get the ordinance changed, but that won't affect this project. I heard last time complaining about the ten with setback, it's been tense, ten weeks since the ordinance was adopted.
And I didn't do specifically say, I think this is one about a hundred and thirty feet to the property line over here to a hundred feet. As it comes up and along through there, so it's. Definitely the the pavement is is not way up to the property line.
Now, more questions of the closing public hearing?
Now more questions or closing vote, Karen? So. On the regular business session, first order of business is the approval of that, June thirteenth. Take your hand, my hand, of course. Any discussion, comment, anyone I had is in absent space for now. Now, all those in favor of adopting? So now. And guess what? Ames true value. Now, a. Opinion from our planner on the contract. Two four six nine point two, go with it.
That's the one.
With. You guys. On a good recent. Rather fast than I have. Do you explain with WB that what we have is?
It's a sort of a small. Trade, you know, tracker trailer, so it's not a, it's not your. Large duty track, but it's a, yeah, roughly forty foot, we have WB forty, nobody's forty feet. So it's a.
All right. We're fourth. Those national property plans. Whatever. First thing I want to bring up is not rather than. This is quite a print of the nineteen ninety eight survey. The ordinance says current. Nineteen ninety is hardly current. Important comment. I've never much has changed if anything, but I can just count for instance. Or specifically to the current, we have a policy of six months. Oh. This is a lot. Yeah, twenty four fifteen. I think the legal survey is still on. I know.
We did have, I mean, the, uh, survey that was one of this condition, they, you know, reviewed the boundary, but that was part of the. The original scope, like you mentioned, uh. Yeah, nothing's been conveyed, uh, out of the, out of the parcel.
I. As one member would be satisfied if another survey was found, one or another one wrote a letter saying that that boundary survey is still active. Want to actually. Pass it, I mean, accept this application, complete the notes. When our ordinance says a recent survey.
From this letter, go along with the mark, the owner of the apartment, must show the lines of market. Somebody.
They should have just been pens. That doesn't verify that's. I'll see consensus report. Your survey and or a letter from a surveyor saying exactly.
Yeah.
Consensus. Sensibly around the survey or letter, don't pay voice to stand surveyor. Including the original, but the boundary is selected.
In, in, you say including the original, I mean, a.
I'm saying the original surveyor can sign it, it can write a letter. Whoever you want to do it.
Or or a separate one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure there since. The original surveyor, the surveyor that, you know, we had provided the boundary survey of what the.
I need to be tried, that's like, um, add a story and tell you what the. That is a big difference. I read this. Counting this caveat notice you put in hand a boundary decision.
I'm not very.
He covers backside wonderful. All right. I, I think, the only thing is she has some, I know she has some regulations. That we define that means society, you standards, that we do a panel in conditions of approval will be added. I think at this point, you know, like a. Presumably we had to start doing additional presuming the founder's service. So the one person is probably, that's more or less the copy of the decision we included down to the code office. I think that's all.
I think that's all I can bring to the bottom.
And we'd like to tune the ads of. Cool, another one in finance. Personally. And. And who decides when she's listed and is safe and worked every month. Everybody integrating on those. The first one is also passed on, will we refine it as a fact, so the code officer isn't put back at the. Any other who should know someone. We have two, we know this on the.
Yeah.
So we can start to do the board. Anybody direct for that? So we both.
And so. And you mentioned the approval number two and three.
So, yes. So. Saying they submitted everything else. Will we find the. Oh, we need to report cycle. Sorry, let's do that. Tony Lester. Yeah.
Well, satisfied with the way you know, quite well. Considered issue. So I had a note to say that. Well, we're marked over. The random law and the ground law and the top law. And all the. Better. So.
Um. So is there. Will the conditions we just made sound, can we find this application free?
That's the most required.
And for the decision, all those favorite finding out they should include. For the conditions that were approved. And so you're running, okay, that's same good thing. Finally, application, completely ready to load on it. Uh, this will be on with the conditions of approval and the additional. Letter or survey, survey around the. This traditional condition of being finally approved. Right? All those in favor? You see the motion? Who finally, uh. And the receipt of a survey and a letter. On a survey concerning boundaries to finally apply for the application. And we, and we revise plan with those notes on. And so, yes. All those in favor? Close, abstain, opposed, opposed.
Thank you. So much of those. It will, yeah, I will work with our surveyor to see what, uh, what we can do. Submit everything through. Emily, uh, presume?
Emily, Jackie, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure you can include Jackie.
Okay.
Are she?
Yeah. Day to day.
Day to day.
No.
All right.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to submit a new application to toy road. Half hour three, portion block twenty nine. With Wayne Wood, that's my surveyor, that's several of them. There are other things, you know, please, the time people who. Give them all my experience, um, they're followed, so. They're different.
Yeah. What we start.
But. Here in the. And that helps keep our property in. Hey. That's fine, right?
I was just afraid to hear me about it. I don't have it. It's a little bit full of something that I will pull with my hand. For proposing a fourteen watt subdivision within a hundred plus acres of land out on the Foy Road. Um. Uh, it's on the east side of your power line that runs up through, on the west of the end is Montplague Bridge. Close down through there. On the map, we've got shown with fourteen lots along road that is opposing and it is definitely two there in. In the rear of what we call Bushnell Drive, which would be a shared driveway to those two lots. Uh, left access points along the way between the. Other, other spaces in the lot to access the remaining land at land at times. I will tell them to take part over the line here for the purposes of. When they release, we have the weapon, they have been communicated by Mark Hampton Associates. It's just a test track on the lot, it was brought by Mark Hampton. When the submission is done, we'll let it come. Their fire chief on fire protection, the. Well, go, it should be asked at water, we decided to do a lot of successfully done by my. Sensei Associates. The field in the waterfall in front of him. And, uh, the main instructor, the lady came through last night and Saturday I got a couple of letters from that. Which I did email over to everybody, to pass that around. Uh, we got one labor for the landscape plan that you guys did tend to review the last meeting. Uh, we picked some stormwater and servants and boy stuff that was submitted by very high associate. You on that?
And here. Again, uh, and I'm gonna know what the road draw. I believe this termination stated by twenty twenty two. We had a number of things, uh. Brought up, number one, I thought I could confirm it one way or another, but I don't see it. So Wayne, that proof. Thank you.
I don't. Well, I'm here. I don't have any proof of me, but I think I'm very small and that's all, but I need to pass.
Thank you. Last on the line. Number two is scale. I understand we have a. Back scale of a hundred, I understand this would require putting this on two sheets. I think, I think the plan is reasonable. The idea of a hundred feet is to maximize visibility. Plan is generally plausible. You know, that applies to them. So what is the player before the ones away of the hundred or a hundred and fifty in this case? And nodding heads, which the recorder can't get. So everybody nodded in form of the. Of the audio where, um. Proposed lot line with dimensions, lot number, lot areas, suggested locations of buildings and setbacks. Uh, I think what we really miss is suggested buildings and for setbacks. Against the park, yeah, I mean, that's awesome.
Absolutely. We can fill some setbacks on there, boy.
I am, I personally, uh, stay like this, not sure, and you can't build a weapon. So have a boundary setback anyway. Yeah, I'm going with them on one of those two, you know, wanting to go on. It's trying, I don't forget now. Most of the first thing you're gonna have to get is the change, but it's still the first compromise, if you want to want to build there, they're gonna want to build twenty feet this way. If I get slid, she wants it back by a feet. Okay, so is it all right if we just set the setback lines? Thank you. Census, nod again. Uh, you showed the contours, did you, I did those. Did you add some, uh, labels on us?
I, uh, kind of regret to throw a no out there. That's where I got it from. That'll be all. There are two foot fireworks and light art.
Yeah, a couple of ways with the mains.
Actually, this is they just donated that. Do they, so.
Yeah, it's, it's the same day as, but if you would add some actual labels to product.
Okay, yeah.
I don't know what that's really is.
Yes, we can fill that.
All right, although you can leave it to that and do so. Um, she's, she's. On the current boundary survey, I personally believe that about Mr. Wooden signing, signing the plan. Involved himself with the structural boundaries. Okay. That he's taking full responsibility to report the survey of the entire project. Like you. All right, I think that, um, so. There's nobody disagree with that. He's showing his ground numbers. Under, under what there. Do you think you can counter shoot that? Think about. Uh. Yeah, there's been no, you had no, like, payment, but you did not put the specific, but finding zone down, I'll do that kind of thing.
Uh, well, specifically you want here, but.
But he do say it's not. You know, my. Two, it's not two, three, one, two, zero, that's, uh.
You won't be there.
No, that's fine, but yeah, we could work out, we can expand your. Maybe. Six. We can correct spelling of that certain. And I don't, you don't. So. He needs to, he needs to make. He's looking for me down. Um, no, six. Yeah, you need a condition to the pool. Block or space board, even if you don't have it.
It's part of that food locker.
Yeah. And.
We want a label condition.
Yeah. You know, probably the name one. Um, and we have two. No requirements on, uh, all sort of plants. Even planning the order and slash to do lowest, not even set, not even downwind, to get such a buddy down, the word is a man. And no way that, and then, um. Oh, no further subdivision of that. Ever. Which you can find those in the ordinance somewhere. We're about to ask. So I have the permission to look at the subdivision ordinance on the ordinance. He's around there. Pardon? He's, you know, there, yeah. Yes, the wording was given. And. They have cost assessment, construction required, buildings. And demonstration, financial impact. They will basically do. Your experts, I think, give you the different part, but you can read the letter from the land.
Uh. Question on that is if we're, only thing we're doing for improvements is the shared driver. What are you looking for? Information on that. That's Pusno Drive, access to two lots. Shared driver. Lot built.
You know what it is to that? Um. That's smart enough that you're buying the self finance in there?
Which is direct. That'll be self money.
Yeah. I figured. He's addressing. He's doing. Like we go to you directly. So statements of that effect. And we need a word from his bank saying he's.
To planning services.
We need a letter in his bank saying he's sold it up. Do that. We need a letter from his bank saying he's got. Pass. On building real. He has a word. A letter from your bank or other institution. Saying I like you.
Good.
Okay. The typical cross section. Typical cross section. And those grades, there's no drive. That's pretty standard. There may. No one would check that out as that were due. Twenty-one months.
I think you missed one.
Or?
You missed.
Possible. That's a different one.
So.
Oh, innovation. Future for all three systems.
Right. And they do show access for meeting area on the map. There's two and every time a floor goes that unlevel meeting means them. Like they're. Site. So does the board ask anything further or is that acceptable sign that there is access coming? Through something.
Sure you're not. Yeah.
Yeah. And believe that.
Two. 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 All of these.
That's true. There's three. Yeah. And check it out.
What's away? Thirty-five foot real though.
It's really one of them. And I watch.
It's right. Thirty-five.
It is thirty-four feet.
I thought it was strange. It's just better. It's different.
Says thirty-five. I'm gonna have many. There.
Uh, it's probably maybe two portions of that that play over here.
Right. You don't affect that, but you're, you know, the reserve road will need to be fifty feet. The reality is obviously it looks the same as the one that played with fifty feet.
There should be two portions. Thirty-five is the angle point from the left.
And then then be more.
I'm basically a distance from the left side.
Yeah. It's there. It's now fifteen point one eight percent. That's a slightly lower.
Yes.
All right. Do that. On what? Okay. Uh. Move the second. What? You said.
Yeah. Remember you know that's one of the. He wants me further or is the access? The three access.
Well, I was. I was getting. My phone. Do you have any plans this time for what you might do with it? Any real plans which you might do?
Not really at this time. I mean. Yes, because we're potentially. New war once we see how those go. I think there could be either. No dollar plan or submitted piece of paper, but. You don't know what you're gonna do with the material yet, but you want spaced for access. I look. Go. Try to look at Pusno Drive, smack it or what? I guess people get it. I'll say it from. On that day. So is that clear?
There's a cross section.
You want typical cross section on a shared drive. Before the. Well, it's going on. It's definitely right. It provides potential work. That the road. Yeah. I mean. Come on, you did your word at that some of them, but. Standard for your shared right length with it.
How many drive sections for drives? We do. I don't know how we defend this. Shared although greater for. The fighters or X, not with the users.
And if we were to expand further, we'd certainly be back to you guys.
Yeah. That's a great problem. For that. And since the remaining land is one of the users. Just three years. No. No. I'm just making a little bit of. But what else? Every. No, we're. One. Could be like. There's some of the weapons. It's just getting from the land there. And that. And there it goes. A separate weapons. I thought. And. Some of the things about trade. Coming. The world. There's. Or.
So under. Miscellaneous road arrangements, section fourteen, fourteen point one, new construction expansion. I mean. These provisions clarify the construction expansion and length involved roads and drivers within the time's cap. Um. Although roads construction used for purpose of support and not research and. And our sounds. Grabbing was meaning the number of clients of section fourteen point three point one. I don't know if that defines with this. Get a driveway. Qualifies.
I'm pretty sure it wasn't done and shared. I guess it was shared.
It's not jumping out, but I did further.
Typically, you have a match number with your. Something. Really. Sorry. For you.
Well, my, my memory. The way it was written. I hope we thought of this. Then to install it. The. Don't remember. That's ten feet per sound driveway or a certain X number of driveways.
Well, that's people. Yeah. That's actually. That's the big. That means. I don't. Go where.
We will dig it out if you. Or tell you the good thing of this. And all this. So you're not going to read. Our section. Without one single family model example, they need these standards for store management. No. Moving forward, I'm sorry that both roadways considered as assessment. We'll find outside style orders. The present fact. State those. We really got it. And. Well, that's. All right. For these erosion sedimentation control plan. Plan. Not easily identified on the plan. Name and address, contact, information for the person responsible for anyone in a implementation plan. Sending a national location of water bodies that may be affected by erosion and sedimentation in this project. Existing in opposed drainage patterns, drainage channels that range around their water bodies. This was described in corresponding work with Charadine Consulting, but not as all period to be done on a plan. And describes an inspection law, schedule and frequency that is. Frequency is not here more than a plan. There's some difference. Players. Plan.
Um, just that we can supply fairly easily. Um. I'm not sure. When you say the name, person who is responsible for the installation of the work project or is it? It worked. Sorry. When you say the name, address, contact information, first response for implementation, I mean. The only construction is gonna be the one doing the work, so I've got. I already worked on, so. Is that the kind of thing you're looking for?
I know that. And. I would think so. And after the fact. And I don't want to show.
Why not? What part of the record is Montplague work? So. Screen. For the latest. Yeah. You know. Great.
And goes on the road, goes in there. Eventually. By far, well, then. So. Those of us who remember that. You. I didn't get that. But yeah. That's very good. Um. We may report a review and endorsement of this planning in erosion sedimentation control plan by the Knox. Like that sort of water conservation. I don't know that we've ever done this. But we want to send it to them. They're reading. It's just the soil. And erosion and sedimentation. I'm sure it's pretty standard. We want some of that. Not some. Anyway. Well, that and too. We'd have to request the. On it soil, which is a. UCA organization. And what. Makes so much talent. Page for some of this. To take a report over and say, yeah, this next time. Basically.
And just survey it. How you do.
You mean not with what I would have. It's a surveyor. Uh, but then. And I have. I have subdivisions I represented. So. And it's gonna go to that. When it came back on. But. We, in my time on this board, any subdivision. We're not there. On the road. And then edit all. So we'll say on. On the road. What were you? As far as I know, we never answer.
Did you leave that? And where you buy. And you do.
I don't know. Right. We're just. What to do.
Right. Yeah. It's still last three if you want. Whatever you decide. It says may require. So it's not. Of course.
I have no reason not to trust. Their own. Fair enough. See. Oh, that was. Uh. I said. So you want to say you're off? I'm a little bit. You want to report a review? We've already, okay, a pre-submission. Can we now have a formal vote to waive the landscape requirement? Okay. Second. Any discussion? How was the phase? Or I could lost the rules on. Uh. Uh, you're getting. No, no, no. No, my plans is a hundred and forty trips. Uh, request site distances from driveways we show. And let us get this. That. I think. Once he got. Or I have. We did the recovering statement saying that all. Lots have. Need to receive. Or that you put to be decided. It's supposed to go. Do you follow? COP standards? Yeah. So it's. Twenty-five. It's thirty-five. No. Center. So we need to say COP standards. Not that. Thirty-five. Need to receive the. Some of the site distance requirements. Uh. And usually there's no. On the farm. Okay. Is it the developer's intention to form a homeowners association? And then for maintenance, so it's the only one has a source. Yeah.
Ability of road vehicles, including those fully with two blocks. That are accessed by. Very high on.
And we would like to see that. The graphics. I thought. Homeowners Association. Yeah. Well.
Yeah. Not a whole. It's a road being.
Well, they're completely. Deep lot. It's part of one lots.
We can supply a copy to your review.
Okay. All right. Well, I believe when you make those changes, submit that information, we will find those. Pathological. I feel with the schedule of public hearing. Is there anything else I didn't do that? Good. There. Um. I don't think there are calendars. Our meeting in two weeks. You should try. When you're following. That's when you get out of the wall.
I guess. See. And your next meeting is on the twenty-fifth. I think that's on the next.
That's on. We're. Yeah. Second. All right. So we'll schedule a public hearing for next week on July twenty. Fifteen. At the beginning of seven o'clock. And you will receive a bill. You hear that? You'll get a bill. I believe that's all we have. This is pretty easy stuff. Nothing happens. Besides any other public hearing. Tonight is a long one by our standards. I respect those statements. But I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm actually, I am a hall of campus. It's been many a September gentleman. So we should be doing one. All right, finally after that. The name Optimus Construction Management, real education for the renovations of our old primary school. Three forty six. So you are.
So I am. And we have probably been. I got a with me name from off, I guess, Fred Muti and Adam.
And you're all good. And if like the only one over here was.
Yeah, I can certainly, everyone hear me okay? No, you're good. I'm not pointing. I gotta grab my. Uh, email next Sunday, Jerry, so.
Yeah, we're supposed to tell them, but they hit three of them.
So I, I found where my car and took it out for the sun. So people that are familiar with the site, um, obviously we have the old primary school and with the shady, well, we're trying to go for the most part. In this little bit darker stadium, we're going going to control areas to exist in building is where you remain. And then, of course, we're showing parking lot to three games in the whole area recreated around the entire site. And working with that. We are removing parking area, at least for now, we're. Especially about the off boarder. But we're moving the one direct. And, um. What that is gonna do is very useful for converting series to the site, which actually helps us from the storm water point of view. Leaving existing portions began doing some infills to these specific areas here with buildings. And then in the back, where we have the mechanical room. Uh, we're attaching, um, a third section connector, and then we're doing, uh, essentially a three story building. Um, I think we mentioned we have one hundred thirteen beds, uh, essentially twenty trees that were working in them. And this is just the rain ground has a still basically different free, um, free storage. Um, will they connect rooms and just a mechanical room that goes then connects to the, um, the old gym. I know this is only schematic, so we've been working on it for a while, but, uh, just take a look at overall drains and stormwater and. Trying to swipe that into a little bit of treatment and the existing essentially, uh, old thing was coming out from the century travel from south to north on the system side. We're leaving both access points in here, this one on the north side is for deliveries. And on the south side, we're actually gonna have to turn around or at least a pull up and, uh, for loading and loading, uh, for the maintenance on that. And appropriate parking, um. Sewer, we're working with Bob Loud Sewer District about, um, about the zipping pump stations, we're working with him on that, of course, the location that's at twenty seven. That's still a question, so we're working with, uh, the town on that, so. Water service, uh, remain in place and then, uh, uh, working on the electrical service to, you know, hopefully. So. So. In effect, that's, um, that's kind of in the nutshell. Turned over the comments and. And what we need to do.